The Carson City's Board of Supervisors has been called to order already, but let the record reflect, we have all of members of the Board of Supervisors here tonight. Laurel, if you want to call your side to order, I know you don't have a quorum on that.
The Carson City School Board is in attendance, trustee Walker, trustee Wilkie, and trustee Crossman. Unfortunately, trustees Cassioppo, Green, and Sorzik had other obligations, so we do not have a full quorum. We will not be able to take any action at this meeting. However, we will be here to gather information and to participate in the discussion.
Good. Well, operators of committee of the whole. How's that? No, I don't know. All right. Can we call in supervisor Barrett to lead us into pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any changes that either body knows to the agenda tonight?
The only change, Mr. Mayor, would be to item 30F, 30 Foxtrot.
I like the 30 Foxtrot.
So for the purposes of this meeting, that item will be for information only. There'll be no action taken on it.
Everybody understand that one?
Is that item 10 on the school board agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Unless there's an objection then by anybody, we will take the agenda as posted with the change mentioned by the city manager to change 30 Foxtrot from possible action to information only. Okay, now's the time for public comment. Anybody want to come up for public comment? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Leanne Morris. I'm very happy to be here. Thank you, Mayor Kroll and President Crossman, for allowing me to come and speak during public comment tonight.
Former Teacher of the Year.
Thank you, Mayor Kroll.
Yeah, you are. Don't let it go away.
No. I came to speak with you tonight about an event that we are hosting with Carson City School District. And I brought this big poster. You may see some of these around in the community just for our TV viewing audience, so that they would at least get a picture of it. And you, of course, have your own poster on your table there. This video documentary called Screenagers: Growing Up in the Digital Age was produced by a pediatrician, Dr. Delaney Ruston, in Southern California. She was very concerned about the use of screens, computers, phones, whatever electronic devices her own children were using. And so she put together this video documentary. And so we are very excited to have a community event here in Carson City. As you can see, it's going to be here at the Community Center on February 2. We're going to have two showings, one at 5:30 and one at 7:30. We are encouraging our parents and our students to come together, because if you have an opportunity to go to the website screenagersmovie.com, that's on the bottom of that flyer, you can see all sorts of testimonials for parents and children, students of all ages that have attended these in communities where they live. And it's really, we know of the times that we live in and how much technology, you know, is being used, not only at home, but we're very fortunate to have a lot of technology in our school district as well. So I just wanted to come and let you know that this event is happening. It's free, open to the public. I've been to the Boys and Girls Club, to the library, to the Kids Club, contacted some other organizations in town as well. So we're really trying to get the word out. And if you're interested, please come, because we're very excited to be sharing this with you. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but...
Well, let me look at my iPhone and I'll find out. Any questions? Leanne? Leanne, I don't see any tonight. And on behalf of all of us in your community, thanks for everything that you do. And it's not lost on us that you are former State of Nevada Teacher of the Year, and we're very proud of that.
Thank you, Mayor Kroll.
All right.
All right. Have a good evening. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Public comment? I don't see any then. Are we ready to move off public comment, onto a little welcome thing? Laurel, you have anything to say tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank everyone in this community for coming and supporting the Carson City School District and supporting the public schools. Carson City School District educates not only my five children, but 7,627 students in our community. And they educate not only the most highly gifted students, but the most challenging to educate and the most vulnerable. Eighteen percent of the students in Carson City School District are English language learners. Some of us come with no English skills. Some of those students come with no English skills at all. Fourteen percent have an individualized education plan, so they are receiving special services for a variety of different reasons. Some as simple as speech, some much more complicated. Nearly thirty-six percent of the students in Carson City School District are qualified for free and reduced lunch. Those children come to school, they're not only educated, they are fed, and they are well taken care of. And despite those challenges, Carson City School District last year with a class of 2018 had an eighty point thirty-one percent graduation rate. And that includes the Adult Education Program, which services those students who have already left the traditional school setting and are coming back for that. So I just want to thank our community's support, because public schools have taken a beating the last few years. And I think there's a lot of good things still going on in our schools. And I know that it can't continue without the support of the community. So thank you for all that you are willing to help us with, to help make our students learn better, to be safer, and to go out to be better people. Thank you.
I could have followed that up. That's pretty good. I just want to say, you know, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, you know, the economy is starting to really pick up around, and the pressures of, you know, of a growing economy are going to start hitting all the way around. And so I mention that, because I think that meetings like we have here tonight between the school board and the city are extremely critical to make sure that we're all going down the same path, and we all know of each other's problems and issues, because that's what makes Carson City a great place. We work together here in this community, and I couldn't be more proud that, you know, we have these joint meetings. I think we're the only school board and Board of Supervisors that does joint meetings like this. And, you know, something like, you know, you might say, well, you know, what do you get accomplished? We get accomplished a lot by just being here, talking to people, and understanding what's going on. So I want to thank the community for, as Laurel did, for all the support it gives for all of our institutions. So, okay, with that, Laurel, you want to take over? And you got the gavel.
Okay. I don't have agenda item numbers that match up with your agenda items.
That's all right. We'll fix it up there.
So we'll go ahead to agenda item five, which...
It's thirty alpha in hours.
Thirty?
Alpha.
Alpha.
That's right.
Thirty alpha. Okay. I thought he said elf. Presentation on de-escalation of force in the schools to include a presentation of measures incorporated by the Sheriff's Office into the School Resource Officer Program, as well as the community at large, that are intended to detect, isolate, de-escalate, or neutralize threats in the school district environments. For discussion only, Sheriff Ken Furlong.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate this. This is a great opportunity. Timing-wise is virtually perfect. We've been in our SRO configuration for now just over 12 months. We started last December, and things are going very, very well. There is always that talk in the coffee shop of, well, what about, what did the cops do, and how did this thing get out of control, and so on and so forth. And so I very intentionally asked Mr. Morano, the word is de-escalation in Carson City. It is continuously. Back around about the timeframe of 2011, we learned very strongly that we were dealing with mental health issues all the way across this country, that were very often at the core of our most violent incidents, and that we should alter our paths or approaches towards our responses in an attempt to de-escalate versus using that force, which very often can cause incidents to escalate. We use, all of our officers that are assigned to the schools are equipped and managed the very same as every officer on the street. They annually must go through use-of-force types training, show proficiency with their less-than-lethal-type devices. They are all equipped with tasers, the very similar things that you will see from any police officer on the street. In addition to that, we do, I do, direct that all officers at Carson City Sheriff's Office, including our SROs, complete a 40-hour training in what's called crisis intervention. Crisis intervention is our mainstay of training that is devoted towards recognizing those signs or those characteristics of a crisis that a person may be going through, understanding what it is that we're doing that can cause that to escalate, and back off of those measures. Something that was proposed very early this school year, and we did adopt it, was this traditional uniform backing off of it a little bit, because we do recognize that the uniform in and of itself causes an anxiety. And so we wanted to create that better relationship with the students, better relationship with the children. Again, every moment of the day is about de-escalating conflicts. We do know, as you all do, that bad stuff can happen. And we have certainly taken those things into consideration as the last six months of the previous school year wound down. What can we do to better equip those officers in the schools to be prepared? And those measures have taken place, so that we're not carrying bad things through the schools in front of the students all the time. We have been very, very successful, with one exception. Right now, two out of three of our school officers is certified nationally as an SRO officer to work in the environment. Those practices, along with ours, also focus in on de-escalation of events. A really good example, and I'll kind of open it up to questions after this, a really good example, we met with the schools just prior to the school year beginning, and had a discussion. When circumstances arise where a student has to be taken off the campus in a under-arrest format, what are the practices that we as police officers, sheriff's deputies, and the schools can do to avoid that display of humiliation, if one might say, or trying to tone it way down? Those types of discussions are ongoing with our schools, because, again, we want to take the most assertive steps to prevent any violence from occurring. I'm very pleased with the program so far this year. To give you kind of a glimpse at it, in 2015, which is, 2016, I'm sorry, which is obviously the second half of last year and the first half of this year, we have had 1,474 responses to our schools here in town. The officers are very, very busy. We've been very fortunate. We have not had any disasters. And they come in a myriad of different forms. We hope that the relationships that we're building with families, I have Ms. Banister behind me with juvenile probation. She's just a super resource for us. We tend to be engaged with the same kids very often, over and over again. And having those resources all together, the school district, ourselves, parents, and the students themselves, allows us information where we hope to not have these incidents take place on the campus, but we can control them in a much lighter format.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I think I'd like to tell a little story about the sheriff here, if I could.
Oh, God.
You know, and some of you may have heard this before, but last year, you know, I'm on the Circles Board of Directors, and Sally Zola, who works in my office, is a former Circles ally. You know, she got a call from a mother of a young man, a mother who'd gone through circles, and the young man was in middle school, and was sort of going off the deep end in terms of a lot of different things going on in his life. And the mother was thinking that she couldn't handle him. Was it wit's end? The boy had left school. He'd left the Boys and Girls Club. And he was just kind of dropping out. And so Sally calls, my Sally, calls the sheriff. And within 24 hours, we had the sheriff's office, the school resource officers, the juvenile probation, the school district, the Boys and Girls Club, Carson Health, and I think State Health was involved as well, looking at this young man who was 11 years old. And 24 hours later, that young man was back in the Boys and Girls Club, back at school. And of all things, and this is what makes Carson City a great place to live, of all things, he had the sheriff's cell phone number. And the sheriff said, "If you have a problem, you call." Now, where else do you get that in a community of 55,000 people, where in 24 hours you could have that kind of resources directed to one young person, and that's probably saved that young person's life? I mean, just through jumping on it right away. So, congrats to you, sheriff. I mean, that's why you're sheriff, and that's why we have a good community. Good.
I appreciate it. And really, that is, that story goes to the core of everything. We have another program, and all of our schools are very, very familiar with it, Handle With Care. Very often, we run into incidents throughout the course of the clock, middle of the night, et cetera, where students' behaviors the next days may be affected. And what we attempt to do is to inform those schools, so that they know the next day that this child could be not performing the way they normally do. And it's called Handle With Care. And it's been very successful. The feedback I've gotten from the schools is, please continue it. In fact, encourage your officers more and more, because it's vitally important for the teachers that are in the classrooms to know that if Johnny is acting out, is this a discipline issue, or is this a leftover of some unwarranted circumstance that he has no control over? And so, yeah, within this community, we jump up. We jump up for the schools.
So you say 1,474 responses. What exactly is that? Is that 1,400 fights, or kind of...
No, it's a myriad of so many different things. There's 1,400 calls for service to our schools. With the high school, obviously, just based on its population, being at the top of that list, 500, close to 600 calls for service over to our high school area. But none of them tragic.
And we have one of our SROs at the high school. So is that in addition to have an additional person there with them, or is that, they're there?
These are their calls for service. That SRO at that high school has responded to close to 600 calls.
Wow. Okay. And then just the other thing, we talked about the budget last time. Do you see any increases in the costs now that we've done it for a year, in year two?
At this point, and I've spoken with Mr. Stokes about it, at this point, your annual update would be, it is the same as we presented initially. I don't see any embalances whatsoever. We are continuing as we briefed the board when we first passed this program.
So I just want to say, as a school administrator, I dealt with your staff often, as well as juvenile probation. And so I just want to commend you guys, because no matter what the call was, the children were always treated professionally. And I think that your staff is really commendable. So I just want to say, good job to both agencies, really.
Thank you. That is good to hear, because schools and law enforcement are very often thrust into the middle of emotional conflict. And sometimes the officers and the probation officers need to hear what a good job they are doing.
Thank you, Sheriff. Do we have any other comments, or any public comment? Okay, see, none. We'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is agenda item six, or 30B. Informational update and joint presentation on resources flow in emergent situations to include the control and flow of information from the incident command during critical incidents associated with the discussion, or the district. For discussion only, and Sheriff Ken Furlong and Richard Stokes.
And I have Mr. Von Schimmelmann from the IT Department at the city. Want me to kick it off? Certainly, everyone is aware that social media has an ability to take our public and create crisis when there isn't. But on the positive side, it has the ability to inform the public, or inform our families, inform our children of things that they need to know. We've learned through some incidents that have taken place, that the social media networks can act in our behalf to a very large advantage in the midst of a crisis, but that social media has to be controlled. We all know what happened with social media up in Reno at the most recent incident. An enormous amount of information can go out, and it be distorted. One of the things that we recognize in incident command is that somebody has to be in charge of that. And it's not just a PIO, as one might think, but it has to be a joint effort, especially when we're talking about Mr. Stokes and I standing side by side, where the law enforcement response is geared very focused, very determined. And the school district has a responsibility, very focused and very determined, to protect those students for, again, quite an array of types of circumstances, and inform those parents. And we have learned, we learned with our response to Carson Middle School, and I'll let Mr. Stokes take it from here, that a representative from the school district is absolutely essential to our crisis responses, and how we control that information going out and coming back into us. The school district has a much better capability than our city, obviously, of reaching out. And I'd like Mr. Stokes to kind of explain that, walk you through that.
Thank you, Sheriff Furlong. Combined members of the boards here, Richard Stokes, for the record, I'd like to begin my remarks just by letting you know that in the time that Sheriff Furlong and I have been in our respective positions, I think we've developed a really great working relationship. In fact, when any event occurs that involves one of our students, staff member, our building property, I always hear from Sheriff Furlong, and he gives me a briefing on what's happening. And that's everything from suicides that might happen in our community involving one of our youth, to a potential damaging event, graffiti, break-in, those types of things that sometimes occur to our buildings. And so I'd just like to let all of you know that I'm really pleased to work with Sheriff Furlong, and appreciate the relationship that we have. And his philosophy on law enforcement and community service truly is evidenced by the men and women who visit our facilities and who support us in our work. We are part of a situation where communication is a vital piece of what we do in our daily jobs. And being able to provide uniform information in relaying that communications to our parents, to our families, to our staff, really is vital. Sheriff Furlong mentioned the incident that we had several years ago at Carson Middle School. And the exposure that I had as more of a civilian to nearly a paramilitary response to our schools was pretty eye-opening for me. And being able to recognize the role that each institution has in just mediating that kind of a condition was, again, something that we all learned a lot from. We have a process, and I know that trustee Wilkie sits on that for the school district, to create and to develop emergency, an emergency operations process. And that's done regularly. And it has changed over time. I know that in the olden days, there was a process where we published a document, and we distributed it widely. And we wanted not only law enforcement to know that process, but also we wanted our parents and our community to know everything about our operational plan, especially if something were to happen. And that could be from some sort of attack on school or school properties to a chemical spill. I mean, it covered the gamut of events. And then as times changed, and as more violent school activities happened, we learned that we didn't want the bad guys to know where our electrical shut-offs are, and where our exits were. And so as we've become more sophisticated in that process, being sophisticated, especially when it comes to providing joint or uniform information, so that the information that might be delivered from the sheriff's department isn't different from the information that's developed or disseminated by the school district. And, of course, we hope we never have to practice, or we hope we never have to fully engage this process in a real event. But the practice part is also a little bit difficult to set up. But we know that through our joint interest in making sure that we're doing the very best that we can for our organizations and for the community, that we're talking about it regularly. We run things past each other. Fortunately, the sheriff and I see each other regularly outside of business. And those are great networking opportunities for us to talk about things that really do matter. And so at the very onset, I would say, because of that working relationship, we are able to talk candidly about things that are important to us. And we are able to problem-solve. We're able to reach decisions that benefit us as a whole. And so that great partnership is something that I look forward to continuing. But I also want to let you know that we're getting better in the types of things that we do. We have a system that allows us to contact all of our families in the community. We can break that down by age group. We can break it down by schools. We can break it down by language preferences. So we can break it down by sending text messages. We can break it down by sending emails. We can send the robo-call, the automated voice contacts. So there's a variety of different ways that we can reach out in any given condition or situation. So we certainly wanted you folks to know that we have this established, and that maybe in retrospect, we probably should plan something where we can practice together uniformly, and make sure that we are all firing on the same cylinders. Because as these processes change, and as the... change and as the best practices emerge, as these events occur, we certainly want to make sure that we have our best foot forward.
I get both sides on me. I'd like Mr. Von Schimmelmann to kind of introduce a little bit of what has developed since our incident at Carson Middle School over on the Carson City side. He is the director of our IT Department.
Good evening. I'm Eric Von Schimmelmann. I'm the CIO for the city. So just kind of an explanation of what we've done here in the city. Last year, about April, we brought on a management information officer. One of her primary goals is social media. So she goes out, she is closely tied with the sheriff. He contacts her a lot. We post out stuff as events happen. She also was deeply involved in our flood event last week. She did most of the marketing and the video productions and the social media posting for that. She continues to grow that and work closely with the sheriff department here. So that's where we're at with the city. We're going to continue to do that and support them fully.
Do we have any questions on either board?
I'd just like to thank you for the flood coverage because it was tremendous and right on time and very worthy, and having the video of him and the fire department letting you know how to do it was very informational, and we enjoyed that. The other thing is that Safety Committee is yet another reason that we're all together, too. On that committee, not only do we have school district people, but we have the fire department comes, we have the city come. It's a coordinated effort at our sites, and I think it helps with any event that happens even in the city. So we appreciate your guys' time for coming to that and the fire department and all of that, too. So.
I have a question for either Kenny or Richard. There was an incident that happened about a year ago, and a message went out to the parents. And the message wasn't maybe crafted the best, and it kind of invoked a mini panic. So can you kind of go over how the city has responded to that and how they're now crafting the messages so that the information gets out without causing additional, right, mass hysteria?
That's right.
Well, I tell you, that's a tough one. That is the toughest one, especially if it involves our children. To a parent, the only time that child is safe is when the parent's arms are around that child. But in our responses, we hear of the incident and crisis, just the crisis, things go off in our head, and we're going to come rushing to that scene, just as we saw with Carson Middle School, a flood of parents demanding their children right now. It is the core of the challenge. It is the core of the challenge. And going back to what Ms. Wilkie was alluding to, this most recent event where Mr. Morano had assembled the EOC, many of the things that were discussed during that operation actually do relate to the schools, and that's that we provide for an official source of information so that people can get the best quality of information out and understand the level of response that has taken place. Unfortunately, emotions are involved. And unfortunately, as we've seen all the way across the country, that social media platform is going to take off, and that's why I asked Eric to be here with me tonight. This is one of the challenges that I speak with Rachel about all of the time, being able to put down those panic, I don't know what you want to call them, social media things, and gain control over the information going out so that we're not unwarrantedly creating a crisis for parents when the circumstances just don't support it. It is a challenge, and I believe that's why this item is on the agenda tonight. That is the single biggest challenge we face.
And I can add a little bit to that. Even just recently, as we've reached out to families and parents because of the weather, we try to make our contacts relatively short. We try to make them as clear as possible, but even so, we come to that communication from a school perspective, and they come to listening to that message from a different perspective, and that covers a broad variety. And so folks who are answering the telephones at my offices are repeating those messages. You know, if you think about receiving a telephone message at 6:00 AM in the morning and you're still a little groggy and trying to figure out, you know, why you even picked the phone up, there's a broad variety of responses, but most is, why did you call me? You know, what did I miss? Obviously, you had something to tell me. And so while those kinds of messages maybe aren't critical, like something coming from a critical incident at school, it still creates a lot of confusion. And the sheriff said it well, it is a challenge for us to try to say things in such a way that people understand fully and completely. And so we try to augment our communications by, we have a little banner that runs across our webpage that if we're going to delay school, if we're going to cancel school, then it's in another location. There are other places then where they can get that information, and that's not always going to be the case, again, if we're in a condition or a situation where there's a school emergency. And we are in the process of actually hiring a public information officer. We've recognized that this is a need in our organization, and typically, school people don't have those kinds of positions. But we're finding that it's becoming more and more necessary, and so we, too, are hoping to improve our efforts through that work. We know that if we have some specific detail that we've been able to create in a communication plan that not only deals with our external communications to our families and to our community, but also to our staff members. And those processes are important, especially, you know, we are so unique in our community, I think, of a place like Nye County that has, you know, the biggest school district in the entire lower 48. And then you compare that with Carson City, where we're right here and we can get to every one of our schools within about seven to 10 minutes. It's just a different scenario, and we really are fortunate because of that closeness to be able to do things well. But we also recognize that there are things that we can always improve on, and our communications effort is one.
And again, I would like to touch on both Mr. Brankowski and Ms. Wilkie's statement. One of the things that did work very, very well during our most recent storm in our EOC operations is we sat, social media, Rachel, right alongside with our PIO. Ms. Burkett is in the room right here. And so we created a multi-layered platform of information flowing outward. And it's not that we believed that that was the best. In fact, I think we meet next week to review all of these steps and how can we improve upon that, because we were backing up those short bits of information with the longer bits, some sound bites from the mayor, so that people could get more detailed information. And I think that's what folks are looking for. How can I tell you about my three-line text, and it took me five minutes to tell you everything that was in there? Obviously, I'm in a panic zone here, and I'm just going to... So we slow it down. And the public information for the last most recent event worked very, very well, and I think that, community-wide, we received some pretty positive responses.
We did, and for the board members here, I went over a couple of statistics, both on social media and on our city website, in terms of numbers of hits and numbers of views of video. For example, on the video, we had over 70,000 views of the videos that we put out, pretty good for a city of 55,000 people. So I think, unfortunately, we're probably going to have more weather-related events throughout, you know, the remainder of the winter and certainly into the spring, and I think the community will get more comfortable. I mean, it already seems like they're getting there in terms of going to either the school district or the city's websites or Facebook pages, following us on Twitter and so on for the up-to-date information. I think we have that responsibility. I mean, in the year 2017, I think the bar in terms of what the expectation is of the community for up-to-date information is pretty high. So, I mean, we always are going to try and strive to exceed what they expect from us in terms of being able to provide that. So in any type of emergency situation, we want the public, you know, their first instinct should be go to the school district, go to the city website, or make sure you sign up for the reverse 911 system that we have, you know, code red, and get the latest type of information that's available. So we actually had a really good, if you remember, in the EOC, we had that public information cell right alongside the operators themselves. So they had not only the first responders, but the public works people, and it was one integrated team. And we'll, regardless of what the emergency is, we'll replicate that type of a model.
And it just occurs to me, in thinking about it, that the more you can make the public and the parents aware of what is the reliable source for the district, for the city, and train them on where to go to get that information, and perhaps we could even train parents on the difference between a lockdown and a lockout in some of those situations, because I know there's a difference. I pulled up to the elementary school when there was something afoot at the subway, and there was more police at the elementary school, and it was comforting to go in and know that they were there keeping an eye, and there was a lock, I guess you would call it a lockout going on at the elementary school at that time. So, but the more we can let them know as far as reconciliation with their students, that there will be a delay in time until things are cleared, and to give them the proper information, I think that will make that easier. Do we have any other questions?
Richard, while you're there, you might take the opportunity to talk a little bit about your decision-making criteria on when you delay opening for snow or close a school down. Just talk a little bit about your process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In our city, again, because of the uniqueness of our size and location, proximity of schools to city services, we're very fortunate. The city crews do a tremendous job in keeping our roads open and cleared, and the school district also has a staff who does similar work, not on the public streets, but for the sidewalks and the driveways, the bus lanes, all of those things that are critical for our operations. And so typically, I have myself and two other staff members who get up when we are believing that a winter event is about to happen. We follow the usual and customary programming that's available to us through the Weather Channel and DOT's maps and all of those other things. We try to use those forecasts to predict what's going to happen, but then we're actually out on the roads about 2:00 AM, 2:30 sometimes, taking a look, seeing if it's safe for our buses to be on the road. Obviously, I believe it was last Thursday when we had the snow, when the first buses were ready to pull out, conditions were really not too bad. By the time the elementary routes were beginning, the snow was starting to pile up. So it's really difficult, however, to try to change or to alter what's going to happen on a day based on when the snow falls. And so because we're close by, because it's, we have high confidence in our staff being able to have the schools ready to receive students and staff, there are not many days when we can't hold school. In fact, Channel 4 asked me the other day, what does it take to close school in Carson City? And I was very proud. I was very proud to be able to say on camera that we are capable of handling most of the weather-type conditions that might happen. Obviously, if we don't have power, if we don't have water, those are key issues for being able to hold school. Those are life and health, safety kinds of conditions. So we have instituted something this year that is fairly new, and our community's still getting used to that, as are just our schools, and that's an hour delay. And that's typically done to try to give our staff an extra hour to clean up snow, ice, those kinds of things around our driveways, around our bus lanes, around our sidewalks. And it also provides a measure of safety for families and staff who may be traveling here from outlying areas to get here safely if the roads are icy. So there's no exact science, Mr. Mayor. I come from winter country and feel fairly comfortable in driving on icy roads, but I know we also have a lot of community members who are from Southern California who may not be quite so comfortable. And I also realize we don't make everyone happy when we make decisions about our school operations on wintery days, but we do try to take into account the safety of our families to a high degree.
And our school buses are equipped with automatic chains that can be put on automatically?
Thank you, President Crossman. Yes, that's a new addition to our fleet, and so at the push of a lever, our buses can enact, or those chains are automatically applied to the tires of the buses, and they can be removed with that same movement of the lever. And so...
No candy?
So again, our equipment is very high-quality. Our staff are well-trained, and we really appreciate the support that we receive from the city in snow removal and emergency travel conditions.
Okay, any other questions or public comment?
So I would just close it down with this. Regardless of the emergency, we learn from every type, and even in this most recent one with a weather-stated emergency, that sharpens our skills for any other type of a response, disaster response, for any type of facility here in town. And we hope to continue that process and continue the social outreach, because I think it is, it's soothing to the residents here to have that bit of information when they become ready to listen to it.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Seven or 30 Charlie. Is that right? Presentation on the Development and Growth Projections for Carson City. For discussion only, Mr. Lee Plemmell.
Sorry, I'm going to sit over here to be able to reach the laptop. And as I start this up, Lee Plemmell, I'm the Carson City Community Development Director. Our presentation regarding this tonight will be a joint presentation with Mr. Feeling. I'll talk about Carson City's historic growth and some projections that we're looking at, some recent activity, and then I'll turn it over to AJ, and he'll talk a little bit about the school district facilities planning. Let me take just a second to open this up. And attached, what I've attached in the staff report, I'll be using some of the graphics that are already in here, and I also at the back attached monthly community development report. And just for everybody's information, we do update that at the beginning of every month. It's available on the city's main webpage from the front main page under News. It's also under the community development and planning pages at carson.org/planing. So if you are interested in the latest that's going on in Carson City with development, please take a look at that at the beginning of each month. So again, a couple of these graphics are in your packet of materials. I also have a map kind of showing where some of the things that are happening or going on. On the front of the staff report, I have an average of the number of residential units that have been issued over various periods of time. As you can see by the graph, development has come back to Carson City, and it's reoccurring. You can see we've had, you know, nearly 10 years of not much growth, and it's back to levels that we've seen pre-recession, not unprecedented levels. I mean, we can see, you know, going back that we've had growth in the past for, over long periods of time. And again, noting, our average number of residential permits per year for the last 30 years is 240 per year. Now, that's obviously been affected by the last eight or nine years or so to keep that down, but, so kind of using 300 per year as an average on the higher end... down, but, so kind of using 300 per year as an average on the, on the higher end of growth that we've seen historically, maybe that's something we're looking on the higher end going forward, and as I go through some of these graphs that I have up here. So also on this page is just, and I thought it's a little bit of interest to the school district, is the mix of housing types, because the housing type does affect the, the number of school kids that come out of a development, whether it be single-family or multifamily, so the different type of products. And I know AJ's been doing some work on that, continues to, to kind of help narrow that in. So this type of information will help. You can see the, the graph above is broken down. The predominant categories are single-family detached, and then the, kind of the orange checkered is multifamily. And again, on the bottom, the yellow is single-family detached, and the orange is multifamily. And looking at the last, you know, since 2000, you can see there's a fairly high percentage of new product that's been multifamily. So I went back and looked at the existing housing stock Carson City-wide, and it's actually not too far off from that in percentages, with the, you know, the combination of 22% multifamily and 9% single-family attached, which is also an attached product, being right around that 30, 31% value. So what we've seen recently kind of matches what we have, but that's not to say necessarily that going into the future, that same proportion will stay the same, because as we reach build-out, and I'll get to the map, see, we have a limited number of big, wide-open fields for development. So, so a lot of our growth into the long-term future will probably start to be more towards that multifamily variety. And so what does that lead to, that type of development? Again, going back to maybe perhaps about 300 units per year. Well, these are the population projections, with that point in 2006, right here, going backwards, being the demographer population estimates for Carson City, we've seen a slight decline in those estimates. It's interesting, you know, when that started going down, like, we have, houses aren't going away, we still have houses, but the economy affects the number of people that are living here and going to work here, so, that aren't necessarily in traditional households. So looking from this point and going forward, again, kind of we've done a high estimate and a low estimate, the demographer's latest estimate is kind of underneath there in black. That, he comes out with estimates every couple of years, that's the latest estimate there. And again, if you look at that, maybe about 300 units per year, you look, start looking at 10-year projections, that takes us from about 55,000 today to 60,000 in the year 2017, roughly, so about, about a 10% growth increase. So putting this together, kind of, I know the school district is always interested in, and I go to the master plan committee meetings with the school district, so we're always keeping in touch and staying in tune with where development is happening. This is updated information. This isn't intended to be precise numbers, it's big numbers, but where, where is development occurring? And this is kind of us taking just a little bit of a crack at where growth is expected to occur in the next 10 years. I've thrown up on there 2017 to 2027, and that's based on projects that we have in the pipeline, what we know is coming in. So up there, you see kind of the yellow areas are the areas where their growth kind of walking around. We have the Silver Oak area up in the northwest that still has about 400 single-family residences that are, that are going forward and continuously being constructed, still there, and another 100 or so multifamily are likely anticipated in that area. Let me just move down from there, trying to get my cursor back there. Down, also on the west side, the Vintage Project, that's, seems to be going forward as a, as an age-restricted property, probably not much in the way of, of school-age children will come from, out of that development. This location on East Williams Street is Mills Landing, it's a townhome project, a single-family attached townhome project, about a little over 100 units there. Probably see a few multifamily units out in this area of Highway 50 East, kind of a, and then with, you know, the big, the big ones in the middle, obviously, Lampa Ranch, we anticipate seeing the first map coming forward in the next couple of months with about 180 units will be in the first phase. I think it's probably not unreasonable to expect about 1,000 units in the next 10 years. And again, that's, that's based on sales. There's, they'll, I think that the project in total will have about 2,500 units, but that'll take, it'll take a number of years to, for the community and for sales to absorb that many units. We have apartments, townhomes on Little Lane with about 100 in the works now, and probably room there for probably a couple hundred more in the next couple of years. Down at the far south end of town, we have Schultz Ranch, that's a little over 300 units down there, they're under construction, they're currently on pace of about 10 units per month. They're selling them at that pace right now, they expect to continue at that pace. And then, kind of in this, this is a area, as the freeway comes through, it's going to be open pretty soon, that's, that's the dashed line on here. We've seen a lot more interest in this area. We have a couple of projects in that area that are already on the, in some form of entitlement or in the works, and probably see a few more there in the next 10 years that'll have some units. So these shaded areas here represent about 3,000 or so units. Sounds, it sounds like a lot, it is a lot of units. And again, going back to that pace of development that we've actually experienced in Carson City before, the city has experienced this kind, this kind of growth at this pace, the school district prior to this has experienced this pace of growth. We've gotten used to a new normal where this hasn't occurred, but it seems to be coming back, because we're seeing the residential units. This last year in 2016, we expect to see that certainly continue into 2017 with the things that are coming in. And, oh, I had the numbers there somewhere, but that 30, that, so these 3,000 units represent, again, we have in the city now about 23,500 is about the number of total units. So, so 3,000 is an additional 12 to 13% increase in the number of units. So I think in the next 10 years, if, if development indeed continues at that pace for the next 10 years, I think we can all expect to see about a 10% growth rate in Carson City. So I know kind of, you know, we've talked about a lot of units that are being approved in Carson City, but, but the reality is, looking back at, at the trends in history, those units have to be sold before they build them. It's not unusual to have that many units in entitlement on the books, so to speak, but, you know, the, the real anticipated rate would, would be about that. So I think we're kind of looking at about that, that rate of growth over the next 10 years. So I think at this point, that concludes my presentation. I'd like to, maybe it might be a good time to ask questions about the growth aspect of it before we turn it over to the school district side.
Just, just for clarification, Lee, that, that 12% growth that you mentioned is over a decade period...
Right.
...which breaks down to a little over 1% per year, because we have a growth ordinance that limits growth to 3% per year. So even at the figures that you're talking about, we're only at about 30, 35% of what's allowed under our growth management ordinance.
Right. In any given year, so, you know, as I talk about that 300 average, we can go back to 1980 and look at it, and there's definitely years, given certain years, when the number is higher than 300, if the average is 300, obviously, but sure, averaging out, it's a, we've seen 1 to 1% historically, historically, the growth rate in Carson City. And kind of what I'm showing at the high rate here would be about 2% per year if, if it kept going at that higher rate of growth.
So one of the, one of, my job is I work with homeless education, and one of the things that I've kind of learned through working with the rural Nevada Continuum of Care is that there really aren't a lot of affordable housing options for families out there. And so I'm just wondering, how much of these shaded areas, if any, would qualify as low-income or even affordable housing-type products or projects?
Yeah, affordable or workforce, affordable can be, we try to avoid that term, I think that, that is the correct term, but in terms, when you're going out and presenting these projects, affordable really means that the schoolteacher can afford it, right? It's, it's for the workforce, it's, yeah, yeah. It's not necess, people get the impression of HUD housing, but I, I think as, you know, there's certainly a mix of products on the, on the page, on the map here. And I think a lot of what, what the developers are bringing in are attached products, and they are looking for the right location and the right place to do those products, where the, where they can get the cost down to where it gets to that affordable level where it's, it's affordable to those working in Carson City, and not just those that are bringing money in from somewhere else.
Mike, to give you an idea of the eight highlighted areas on there, I'd say five of those eight include what would be considered workforce housing.
So we're talking what, 250 for that kind of, or talking 100, 150 up, and 1,000?
175 and under, right?
200.
Depending on the interest rates, yeah.
Yeah. So it's affordable, but you have to have that 20%, that 10%, that's part of the problem.
No, there's programs out there now for 3% down and down payment assistance, so actually you can, you can get financing now for 3% or less.
How much affordable housing do we have in the community now, Lee?
Yeah, off, off here, I can't answer that, in terms of an inventory related to the, the cost of housing. We have, and just for, maybe for your benefit, you know, many, many cities have the Housing Authority that are incorporated as part of the city. Carson City does not have a Housing Authority that, that takes on these affordable housing issues. The Nevada Rural Housing Authority is the local agency that serves the region, they're active in Carson City in looking at housing projects to build and affordable, affordable products.
Well, and I didn't mean to take your presentation in a different direction, I just, you know, last year I had gone to a meeting in Washoe County, and one of the things they did was they surveyed unaccompanied youth, homeless unaccompanied youth in the Reno area, and one of the questions is, they asked them what kinds of services they were able to gather for, gain from the community, and there were, almost everybody reported being able to get food and clothing. And the one need that wasn't met was housing. And so I think that it's just kind of something for us to think about as we go forward, because there's, people have to have a place to live, and they have to be able to afford to live there, so.
Well, and I know the school district and school operators are well aware, well aware of where some, some of the students are living, and, you know, we all, we all know that, and deal with those situations from a land use perspective, as well as the social services side.
If I can just clarify, too, not all of this product is for sale. Like, four of these eight would include multifamily that, that was mentioned earlier, so that's not product that's for sale, so for affordable housing, it could be rent and not, not a mortgage payment.
Should we continue? I'm going to have to advance this for you over here.
While you're advancing that, what's the percentage of homeless kids in our district, school district?
At our next school board meeting, we actually have a presentation on that, so this year's numbers are not readily available at the tip of my tongue, but I can tell you that we have about 425 students that are part of our McKinney-Vento program.
So just, you know, I don't have the final numbers either for Carson City, but I am the state coordinator of education for homeless children and youth, and in the state, Carson City last school year was the third most, had the third most large group of homeless students and unaccompanied youth. And it was pretty much, Lyon County and Carson City are pretty much almost a tie at this point, but Carson City, I think, had 10 to 20 more students. So for community, our size, you know, it is, it is a consideration.
Thank you, Andrew Feeling for the record. Thanks for having me back, supervisors, Mr. Mayor, and trustees. And I think Lee, Lee's been a great partner with the district, his staff, other, other staff at the city, it's just been a fantastic relationship as we try to plan for this future that is a bit unknown, but it seems to be trending in a direction that, that we know. So my part of the presentation is just to speak a little bit about the facilities master planning process that occurred over the last year, and quickly just discuss some of the projects that we are planning to move forward with that address some of these growth concerns, and potentially larger growth concerns in the future. So we began our facilities master planning process back in September of 2015, and wrapped it up almost exactly a year later, in 2016. The Board of Trustees at the September 13th, 2016 meeting approved the recommendations that came out of that facilities master planning committee, of which, as Mr. Plemmell mentioned, he was a part of that, as long as with other folks working at the city. The resources that we were looking to find best use for, 15 million in new construction general obligation bonds, 7 million in installment purchasing agreement, which is part of an energy savings performance contract, which is something that the city similarly has gone through, 1 million in what we call pay-as-you-go funding, and then 1.5 million in capital projects funding, which is essentially part of our government services tax that, that we collect. So all in all, about 24 and a half million dollars. The priorities, as the, the committee saw them, and we tried to kind of help guide that discussion, was following the district strategic plan, which is a large part of guiding what we do in the district. A focus that has been around for some time is removing the portable buildings. We have five portable buildings at Pioneer High School, we have four at Mark Twain, and a couple others scattered about, so that was a big goal of this, is to remove some of those and get more efficient brick-and-mortar buildings, and provide a better environment for our kids. Supporting the growth of STEAM programs, science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics. Finalize our safety and single-point-of-entry projects, which essentially are, are really near completion, except for kind of one exception, which I'll speak to. Support the growth of our one-to-one technology initiative. As you may know, every, every student in our district, grades 3 through 12, has a Chromebook that they have access to at any given point in time during the school day. Increasing our building capacity, which gets back to the growth issue, and then improving our operational efficiency. So going through the list of, of projects, if you could go to the next, thank you. Mark Twain Elementary School, so like I said, there's currently four portable buildings there, we'll be replacing that with an entire new wing that'll have, we expect to have 10 classrooms, maybe more, maybe slightly less, depending on the final configuration, but that will bring all of those eight classrooms and the four portable buildings into brick-and-mortar building, then add a little more capacity there. That's, Mark Twain is a school that tends to have our highest population at any given point in time, historically. Fremont Elementary, that, Mark Twain and Fremont Elementary are actually the exact, essentially the exact same building, they have the same footprint. And so that same wing that we plan to put onto Mark Twain, that's, it's going to look the exact same on Fremont. So, and that'll actually add 10 new classrooms, which with Fremont budding up against that, the Lampa area as that develops, that'll provide some much-needed space until maybe the population expands beyond that, and we need to look at something else, but that will be extremely helpful.
Andrew, before you go on...
Yeah.
One of the reasons that we had to do this is because they've now made kindergarten full day. So before, we could use the classrooms for two classes, and now we have to have more classrooms. So that was one of the reasons, more than we knew that there was going to be all this growth, that, that's not really why we're adding those at this time, it's because we have kindergarten issues in pre-K.
Right.
We have a couple of pre-K programs that need classrooms now, too.
Right. So within the district, I believe most of the schools average about four kindergarten classrooms per school. And so historically, you only needed two classrooms to support those kids, because they're only there for half-days. Now, all of those kids are there all day, so we need four classrooms in each building. And along with that, the pre-K level, we have pre-K available at Empire, Mark Twain, Fremont, and Boardwalk, and that takes space as well, even though they are still half-day, that is not something we offered previously, so that takes up some more, more space. that is not something we offered previously, so that takes up some more, more space. Moving to Pioneer High School, so Pioneer High School has five portable buildings, the plan is to replace those with brick and mortar and then add a commons area and some gym space inside of Pioneer High School. Next slide.
Was there a fire?
There was.
Fire?
There was, yeah, so we had, in one of the portable buildings, which is scheduled to be taken out in the next year or two when we build brick and mortar, it's actually the portable that the facility uses basically for their cafeteria, where the kids go to eat. There was a heating unit in the ceiling that short-circuited and kind of started a smoldering fire, unfortunately it really didn't spread very far. The response was very quick and really minimized the damage. It looks as though we may simply be repairing that and working with it as best we can, especially since a year from now, they may all get torn out anyway, so. But everyone was safe and just the odor of fire kind of within that facility. At Fritsch Elementary School, we're looking to finish the final connections between the buildings and in, within that connection, add two to three classrooms to offer some more space there. Seliger and Bordowick Bray each have one portable, and we plan to remove those portables and then do some improvements within the schools themselves to add some more classroom space. Carson Middle School, they have an old industrial arts wing that, there's some use of it, but it's not fully utilized, and so there'll be major renovations within there to turn it into a full-on STEAM wing where science and engineering classes and some art, the arts classes will be housed down there, and which will add two classrooms of space to Carson Middle School. District-wide, then, just projects, the IT infrastructure of the district will be upgraded with our, the number of device, computer-type devices we have in the district has quintupled in about three years, and so the demand that puts on our system has been, we've been able to manage with it, but it's time that we, we need to be able to upgrade to fully utilize, have students be able to fully utilize the, what that offers to them. Other major maintenance projects will be upgrading, lighting, every light fixture in the district will be replaced with LED fixtures. HVAC systems within the district will be replaced, or some will be replaced. We'll be adding trash compactors at five sites, and then there'll be some water fixture upgrades throughout the district to offer some more savings there. So, with all those projects, the energy, operational projects, we expect that those will be starting next month and should be wrapped up by October, it's actually a really quick turnaround. The larger construction projects of Pioneer, Fremont, Mark Twain, some of those will begin in February as well, but will extend through June of 2020. Once we get to 2020, we believe we'll have some renewed bonding capacity, which will be good, because with all this growth that's potentially coming, we may need that, especially in the Lampa area where, once that, not quite sure what that kind of breaking point will be, but it's likely we may end up needing a whole new elementary just in that area with the number of residences that'll be going up. So, I don't know if that's gonna occur by 2020, but it's something that we have to at least be prepared for, the contingency that that comes up. So, the, with interest rates increasing recently, it's a little scary to think about fully funding for that, and one of the goals through this process is trying to make sure that we had approximately $20 million available in 2020, if in the case we would actually have to build an elementary. With increased interest rates, that makes that, that was definitely doable, the interest rate environment makes that a little scarier going forward, so we'll have to see where that takes us. And we also have increased capacity at the middle school level as well, so that'll be something else to see over time how the populations between the elementaries and the middle school, the elementaries are the greater concern right now, because they're, essentially all of them are at capacity, so we have, we have to focus there in the near future. So, hopefully, the financing environment will be good at that time and we'll be able to move as we need to, to support our students. That's all I have, if you have any questions.
I have a question, but with, related to this growth and the angst of teachers having to teach to tests and getting enough qualified teachers to handle the growth, what's your thought process with regards to that?
Well, one of the things that many of my peers are beginning to do is to work with their local universities and community colleges to create systems to grow our own teachers. Some of the most success that we see are those young people who leave, go to college, go into education, they want to move back home, and their moms and dads want them to move back home, and that way they see their grandkids, right? So, we're beginning to explore ways that through our Jump Start College even, we can take those juniors and seniors who think they would like to pursue the career of teaching. We have a matriculation agreement with College of Southern Nevada and Western Nevada College, and so some of our students, as they're not only earning credits toward their associate's degree, they could also stay in that program and earn a degree in education, and so we're hoping to establish some of our own young people, encouraging them to get into education, using our local resources, and then offering them jobs when they step off the graduation stage. So, there are a lot of questions about that teacher pipeline right now, and we're doing everything we can to make not only our benefits package more inviting, but also stressing some of the cutting-edge educational opportunities that are here for staff members to grow, and promoting just the great area. I mean, who wouldn't want to live in Carson City and close to Lake Tahoe? So, we try to take advantage of all of those good things that we have available to us.
And just to piggyback on that, we did change our salary schedule this year to include a $40,000 starting salary for teachers coming in, to get us equal, on equal ground with some of the other ones. I think that's one of the questions that we need to answer here too, is because we can pay them 40,000 and we can tell them what a great place it is, but if there's no affordable housing, that's been one of the problems that we've had getting teachers come here. We have a lot that stay in Dayton, live in Dayton, and in Reno, because we don't, we don't have that capability here, so I'm glad to see you with the map with, that that's gonna be helpful. One of my concerns with all this growth though, and I don't, I feel a little remiss because I didn't go to a lot of the meetings where these developments were talked about, but was there any talk about the impacts on the school and how maybe we can have some funding through the development process to help us build these new schools and add classrooms? Because I'm not sure, but Mr. Stokes, how many of our elementaries are at capacity right now? We know our high school is.
And I think Mr. Feeling mentioned that they're all at capacity, I mean, we are full, and of course, the, the past practice has been to bring in a portable unit, we don't want to do that, we want to stay away from that if we can, and so that's why this, this process is so important, and we believe we're headed in the right direction, and we don't expect a boom event to happen to where we just can't deal with the growth that might happen here in Carson City, but, but we are using folks from the city to help us understand what may happen in the next five years, in the next 10 years, and then trying to plan our outcomes, especially as applies to capital projects, so that we're ready for that growth as it does occur. And so, we're counting on the fact that it happens somewhat gradually, but we're recognizing that growth is happening, and we need to be ready for that eventuality. Andrew, at your last presentation, I think it was three months ago, you went through the, kind of the formulas on how many new households generated how many school-aged children, which then generated the need for either new classroom space or schools, and I don't remember those numbers off the top of my head. Speaking specifically of the Lampa Ranch area, we just saw that our estimate is for a pace of, say, 100 new homes per year over the next 10 years. So how many, if there are 100 homes built per year in that area, how many school-aged children would that generate, and at what point would that generate the need for a new elementary school, specifically for the Lampa Ranch area?
So, with a single-family developments, we would expect about 30 to 40 kids per 100 homes. So, if you're having 100 per year, right now Fremont is actually our, has the lowest population of any of our schools, I think it's right around 480. So, if you take that, I mean, it would take some time to get to that point, but I think what's, what we're gonna see is that, that push is gonna happen to, I'm sorry, I'm struggling for a word, we're gonna feel that crunch, we're already feeling it at all the buildings, and we have this growth happening across the city, so even though the growth may not happen fast enough purely because of Lampa to justify a school, because of the capacity issues at all of our schools, if we are looking to potentially rezone at some point in the future, I think it'll be justified sooner than later to try to offer that space, so I couldn't give you an exact timeframe, I really, I would struggle to believe that within five years we would entirely need a new elementary school, but I don't think it'd be out of the realm within 10. I think that's probably fair.
I'd like to piggyback on that and ask a question of Lee, I heard you say that Fritsch Ranch is gonna be about 300, I thought it was 400, did I miss something in the last year? 400, what is it spelled out?
Yeah, I think, I think with the number up there was an additional 300 in the next ten years, yeah.
From what's already there, yeah, so it is over 400 then, when you get done, over 10 years, so.
That's right.
By your numbers, that probably would bring in another 100 kids or a few more. I suppose that's in Seliger area, and is there capacity to add on at Seliger as you're doing at Fremont and Mark Twain? That's a pretty big school down there.
Sure, we could definitely add, that's, that is definitely a possibility, it's not something that we've really discussed, but the way Seliger is now, there's, there's no way that they could absorb that at this point, so if, one of two things would have to happen, either we would have to expand at Seliger and add a wing on there, or there would have to be some type of rezoning of that area.
Yeah, we're talking a decade though, not just five years.
Sure.
As you were talking.
But I think, the thing that might be getting missed here too, is if we're getting all these elementaries, we have two middle schools, we have the largest high school in Northern Nevada, second largest in the state, and there is no land to build another high school. And I'm not sure if we could find a place to build a new middle school either, so I think that's something that has, that we're gonna have to wrestle with too, because we have some really great programs at our high school, and we have Pioneer High School, but its campus is so small, there's no way we could build that up to be another full-fledged high school, comprehensive high school. So I think that's something that we're gonna be struggling with to figure out how we provide that education for the added that are coming, because if, you're talking 600 or 300 new elementary school kids, and there's some, you know, some of them leave and some of, that's still, you're looking at 200 more kids at the high school. And so, it's a problem that we've been wrestling with, and I'm not sure, you know, how we deal with that, and I, I'm not sure you guys answered in my last, when you guys were discussing this and with the schools, is there some component in there that the schools will be able to be helped financially to help us with our bonding and stuff? Or like impact fees like they do in other communities?
To come up under discussion with the board before too long, it will be discussed.
Okay.
In the Lampa project, if I remember though, wasn't there a piece of property that was dedicated, land was dedicated for the school, but not impact fees for the school or anything?
Heart though, right? Just the land.
The land, yeah.
And if I could add one more thought, in some of our planning, we've recognized that it doesn't make good sense for us to build a great big elementary schools or just to keep adding on. We've limited that number in our thinking to 650 students, and so when we hit some point, that's when we recognize that we'll likely need a new site to house those students, and we have a very large middle school and a second middle school that's at capacity as well, and so there could come sometime in our future that we need an additional middle school, and so, yeah, this is a tricky process trying to understand where and how this growth will affect us, and of course, we, we value the type of school and the type, the sizes and all those things that are available because of, of just Carson City and what it is, so it's our goal to try to adjust to this growth in such a way that we're, we're not making huge schools that are unwieldy and difficult to operate.
I'd like to weigh in as the new guy, so I'm not speaking for the whole board, obviously, I don't know their thinking. It will be discussed, but I caution you that, from my perspective, there are a lot of needs that the city already has. For impact piece, for example, there's been discussion of fire stations, we got a road problem that just won't quit, we have deferred maintenance, the recession wasn't kind to any of us, so I'm not saying it won't happen, I'm just saying, I'm looking at it with a realistic eye. I've watched government almost all my adult life, and it's good to share, but at the same time, everyone has needs.
So, if we were to look at future developments and impact needs, are you saying, if we put the school site for the elementary already in the Lampa project, are you saying that the next time we look for a major project, we should get a site for, you don't have any land, that you can put a middle school or another high school? It's kind of what I'm interested in, so that when we're doing any other large project, is the impact that you need land to be able to put the next school?
Yes, in fact, that's, that's a critical piece for us, so AJ mentioned that there might be in another five years an available 20 to 25 million dollars, that does not include cost for property.
Has anybody given thought to, we already brought up Seliger, and there'll be pressure on all your schools, has anybody given thought to another grade school somewhere and then converting Seliger to a third middle school?
I believe that there are endless opportunities for us to use our properties in different ways, and that's one of the values we've found in having community PLCs and town hall-type meetings, is we get a lot of really creative thinking that comes out of those efforts, so thanks, that's a great, great suggestion.
I just go down there a lot to see that, the school, it's got good-sized grounds, maybe, I don't see it, but I see it as larger than most of the other elementary schools, maybe I'm wrong about that.
Have any other questions or comments?
I'll just say, I've been, watched, let's go through a recession and now growth stage, and they both come with problems. And I'm thinking here to myself, which one would you rather have, and I have to say, I'd rather have the growth stage, because you have tools that you could deal with it, the recession, you're at the mercy of outside forces, so, you know, we just have to work through these things as carefully as we can and as efficiently as we can, so we'll get there.
Thank you, Mr. Plummel and Mr. Feeling, do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 8, or 30 Delta?
Ah!
Got it. Presentation and discussion on Carson City Health and Human Services collaborative efforts with the district, for discussion only, Nikki Aker.
Hello, for the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services, and Madam President and School Board Members and Mayor and Board of Supervisors, thank you for inviting us to present about our collaborative efforts with the school district, and I, with me I have Courtney Blumer, who's with the Safe Routes to School Program, that is gonna talk about her program, Sheila Story from Carson City School District, the chief nurse there, and I also have Veronica Gallus from our Health Department, she's the Clinical Services Manager. So, and I'll kick it off here, and I'm gonna talk a little bit- And I'm going to talk a little bit about the immunizations in the schools. So this is done through our Public Health Preparedness. And that if you hear the acronym PHP roll off my mouth, my tongue, that's, it's Public Health Preparedness. And we have collaborated with the school district for a couple of years now to give flu vaccines within the school during the school day. The goals of this program, it increases the community immunity within your schools. It helps students and staff stay healthy. And this year, all the schools participated. We gave approximately 2,000 vaccinations this year. And the largest groups that received the vaccinations are your seven to 10-year-olds, followed by your 13 to 18-year-olds. And then followed, tied for a third is your 11 to 12-year-olds and then your 45 to 64-year-olds. So your staff are getting vaccinated also. So, so that's just a little bit about that collaborative effort. And then I will let Ronnie take over and she can talk about a number of other programs.
So I'm Ronnie Gallus, the Clinical Services Manager. And in August of 2015, we came, the Health Officer came before the board, the School District Board, to discuss the Nevada laws related to vaccine requirements. And as a follow-up to that, we are, just have some very exciting things to report. So there has been an across-the-board support from the school district. And we've engaged different providers in the community, from the Health Department to the new school-based health centers, to the federally qualified health centers, to the private doctors' offices, to work on a collaborative effort to make sure that the children in our schools are vaccinated. So that we don't, it doesn't mean children in the school won't get vaccine preventable diseases, but we're trying to prevent large outbreaks that make major impact on classrooms and schools. So Sheila will talk with you about what the school district has done from there and since that August 2015 meeting, and then I'll follow up.
Thank you. And my name is Sheila Story. For the record, I'm the chief nurse for the Carson City School District. I'm housed out of Carson High School. So historically, the Carson City School District has used a three-letter process in regards to when a child is non-compliant with their immunizations. We send home one letter signed by the school nurse. We send home a second letter signed by the school nurse. And a few months later, we send home a third letter signed by the administrator within that school, giving them a date in which they no longer can attend school unless they're compliant with their immunizations. We found this to be a lot of paperwork and a lot of, just a lot of record keeping. So after the presentation in August of 2015, we developed a new letter. And it's a one-step process, one letter with one date. Meaning if the child comes to school and they're non-compliant, they cannot start school until they're fully compliant. We realized that we had to do some catch-up. So last year during the school year, we instituted this one letter with this one date. And each school spoke with their administrator and they chose a date of when that would be. And then we contacted the Carson City Health and Human Services and they opened up their doors for extended hours. So when a child came to school and they were non-compliant, and that was the date in which they had to be compliant, we called the parent, we had them picked up. And then we had services for them to get their immunization done that day and they could return back to school that day. When we sent home the letter, we also sent home a flyer with all the information of every single resource that they could get their vaccination from. First, their private physician office and/or the school-based health center and/or Carson City Health and Human Services. It, it worked out really well. Of course, we had some upset parents, but we worked through all those situations, giving them every opportunity to get that vaccination at different locations on that day. So their child would not be, have to miss school and, and get back to the classroom quicker. Now this school year, what we did is we went ahead and started this year with, everyone had to be 100% vaccinated before they could start. So last year, we kind of played catch-up throughout the whole year. And this year, we brought on five of our employees earlier in the school year, starting the beginning of August. And they went to each school and they went through all the records once again. And when you go through a record, you have to first look at what we had in Power School. And we do have IC now, Infinite Campus, but we use Power School because we didn't know if everything transferred over and everything. And we also checked Web IZ. So all the nurses in our district checked Web IZ and Power School. If they were non-compliant, then a letter went home with the date in which they could not start school, which was August 22nd of this school year. Anyway, once again, Carson City Health and Human Services opened up their doors. And for the two weeks prior to the first day of school, they basically open every day for our, our students to get their vaccinations before the first day. So it seemed to work out well. Of course, we did have some who started school and we played catch-up kind of through the end of September. But I can honestly tell you, I believe we have very good immunization rates at this time. Pretty close to 100% percentage of our students who are fully 100% vaccinated.
Yeah, so basically, we at the Health Department just have nothing to say but positive things about the school district and the efforts and the collaborations. And, and we're excited to say that, you know, it prepares us for the future because the State Board of Health just approved meningitis as a new seventh grade requirement for this coming school year. That the paperwork isn't out on that yet for us to look at all the details. But it just prepares us. We have now a process in place. We have processes throughout the community in place to make this happen. And so it just totally prepared us. So, but I really, Sheila Story has been a champion in this. And, and it's just incredibly commendable to, to the school district, from principals, vice principals, staff in various offices and the school nurses. This, the two other projects that Clinical Services collaborates with, we do sexually transmitted disease education within the health classes. And we have worked through the Family Life Committee to get a presentation approved. And then we work with Erin Bean every year to go into the classrooms during times that are convenient. And that when it fits into her curriculum, it's one of the curriculum items that, that they would like to, to cover. And feel the Health Department, you know, has staff that maybe can provide more accurate or better information up to date from a healthcare provider. And then the school district has a, both seniors do senior projects and HOSA is a health occupation program. And so the Health Department is a, a site where those students come to get exposure to health and public health and what public health's role is in the community. So those are all various ways that, that we reach out to the school district and they reach out back to us and, you know, for education and, and growth in our students.
Hi, to both board, the School Board and the Board of Supervisors, I really appreciate this opportunity to come tonight. My name is Courtney Blumer and I'm the Western Nevada Safe Routes to School Coordinator. Safe Routes to School is a program that we've been doing with Carson City for four years now. And we've been really successful. What the Safe Routes to School program does is provide a platform to encourage kids to choose active transportation, walking or biking or scooters, as their mode for getting back and forth to school. We do this through encouragement, but also by providing services to the schools to help with improvements around the school. We partner with the school district and also with Carson City Public Works to do walk audits around the school. And then we go out and make recommendations for improvements. We've done this with a number of schools in Carson City. Sometimes it's something simple like curb painting, adding crosswalks, putting up different signage. Most recently, we made some changes in front of Fritch Elementary School to help with their traffic flow pattern and improve safety for kids that are walking away from the school, especially at drop-off time. And to help with the traffic flow there at pickup and drop-off. And we've been getting some positive feedback about that particular project. We also host a number of events each year. Walk to School Day takes place in the fall, in October. Nevada Moves Day is coming up in March. We also do Bike to School Day in May. And we have twice now hosted Ride for Reading, which we do as a collaborative effort with the Carson City Library. That's one of our favorite events and the kids really like that one. For Ride for Reading, what we do is the, the Safe Routes to School program organizes it with the schools. And we have books that we use muscle-powered volunteers and some other community volunteers to, to bicycle those books to the school. We put them all out and all the kids in the school get to select a book or two that they can keep for their very own to promote how fun biking is and also the importance of reading. We like to do these tie-ins whenever we can that, that work with something that's important to the school, like literacy. And also to further the mission of Safe Routes to School, which is of course promoting safe walking and bicycling for the kids. With that said, and talking about collaboration and, and kind of doing multidisciplinary projects, I am really excited to announce a new project that we're working on this year with the middle schools. And that is our Photo Voice Project. This is a combined health and civics project that we'll be working with the middle, middle school kids to do through Nevada Moves Day in March. And we are encouraging the middle school kids to take photos of their walk to and from school to document what their experience is like. We're going to use this as an important part of our upcoming Community Health Assessment and including the kids' voices in our Community Health Assessment for the first time. So I'm very excited about this project. And we will also be working collaboratively with Public Works to identify any problems that might come up as a result of this project. If the kids are taking pictures that are like, hey, we really need a crosswalk here. This will give us an opportunity to hear the kids' voices and, and see really what kinds of things they're experiencing, good things and bad things on their walk to school. And, and helping them to recognize their power and their voice in the community and encourage them to be civically involved here in making Carson City the best it can be. So that's our Photo Voice Project and it's really brand new. We don't know how it's going to go yet, but we have super high hopes and we're very excited about this new initiative. So Safe Routes to School really is all about collaboration. Each school has their own Safe Routes to School projects that they're working on. We're expanding the program this year to include more activities, more walking school buses. And hopefully really working one-on-one with each school to make sure that we're matching our program goals and that school's resources to really help the kids to, to walk and bike. So that's Safe Routes to School.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, actually?
So is one of the goals to be able to help the school district either remove a bus route because you can, so I'm just saying, can you target an area that would help them eliminate the expense of a bus route? As a project to say?
So this isn't something that we have worked on specifically eliminating a bus route. A lot of the schools have buses for kids who live outside of what we would consider our walking area. What we're really working on targeting are kids that live within a half mile of the school to walk and within a mile of the school to bike. You can probably talk more about that.
Our work with Courtney has not been to try to eliminate bus routes. But she's been very helpful in helping all of our routes to be safer. That's the name of the program. And whether or not that's by students walking or as their parents bring them to school, sometimes her work has incorporated different approaches in that drop-off pickup area, but really not to eliminate a bus route.
No, that's not the intention. We just want to make it really a viable and safe and fun option so that families want to choose that active transportation and want to be active. And, and of course, this is a Health Department program. Our focus is health and we know that kids meeting those, those daily exercise guidelines leads to healthier kids. And also numerous studies show that that leads to improved academic achievement as well. So that is, is really why, why Safe Routes to School is around, not to, not to compete with the buses.
So one of, this is a concern that I'd actually emailed Mr. Stokes about this last week. And it's the fact that like for Fritch Elementary School, Carson Middle School, I'm guessing Board of Wic Bray, there's a number of children that have to cross Carson Street. And in low light situations, and then you add on wet pavement and icy roads. I mean, I just see it like a tragedy waiting to happen. And so is there a way to work on helping get like flashing crosswalks or additional crossing guards to help keep these kids safe on their way to school?
Oh, I was just saying, somebody should narrow Carson Street.
It's true. And we know that there are kids who do cross Carson Street. And this is something that we deal with on a school-by-school basis. I, I was just talking about how the schools are really individual. Fritch is the biggest of the crossing Carson Street schools.
And I used to work there that time.
So what I want to stress about Safe Routes to School is this is not a you must walk to school. It is safe routes to school. If kids have to take a route that is not safe for them, we don't want them walking anywhere that's unsafe. That said, we do understand that some kids have no option other than to walk in places that we would not consider safe. We don't like that. And we're thrilled with some of the projects that are going on. I know that Carson City Public Works has a project to, to implement some safety solutions on that North Carson Street corridor, hopefully next year. In the meantime, we are working in those schools with the PE teachers to do pedestrian and bicycle safety education for these kids. We're in the schools, we have a bike trailer that we take to the schools. The kids get to ride the bikes and, and practice their hand signals and practice their safety. We work with the littler kids, K through two, on pedestrian safety. If they are going to be walking, we want to make sure that we're promoting safety, giving them the skills that they need to walk and bike safely. We cover stranger danger with the kids. We talk about obeying traffic signals. So we realize that there are some kids, and we want to make it so that all kids can get to and from school in a safe manner. And sometimes that's education. Sometimes it's just encouragement. We encourage kids to walk in groups. And that's really the point of some of our really big days, Nevada Moves Day and Walk to School Day, is to encourage kids and families to walk together, join with your neighbors and walk as a group. A couple of the skids, schools do walking school buses on that day so that a bunch of kids all walk together. And so that's really what we're trying to do. And I do realize that there are less than ideal situations for a lot of kids in this community to have to get to and from school. And we can't fix all of those, unfortunately, just that's where the kids live. But we can make it safer for them by providing them with the skills and knowledge to, to just do it as safely as they can.
And Mike, if I can just address this further with the corridor improvements. And jokingly, we should narrow Carson Street. All of that was considered when we did the improvements for Carson Street downtown. And as we go forward with the other corridors, safety improvements, the proper lighting, all the rest of those types of scenarios that make it safer for kids to go to and fro are all under consideration in the designs.
And just another comment on the kids that are crossing Carson Street to get to Fritch. A lot of them do not have vehicles. And so if there can be consideration for the city bus routes, I know a lot of parents do take the bus to get, help get their kids to school there with their. Any other comments? And I also want to thank you for the immunization clinics that you do in the schools. I've worked as a volunteer for several years helping out. And they're quick, they're fast, and there's not as much crying as you would expect in an elementary school when they get their shots.
Just the teachers.
Just the teachers. Yeah, I was going to say, it's just the adults.
I'd like to make a comment on the immunization too. I, I commend you for going to the, excuse my expression here, the drop-dead date. Parents don't want their kids at home more than a couple of days in a situation like that. And you just have to do that and, and I'm glad you do it that way.
Thank you very much. It actually worked out really well. We had some upset parents, but yet we really tried to make it convenient for them with resources so they can pick them up, get them immunized and bring them right back and hopefully not miss more than half hour, 45 minutes of school. So the Carson City Health and Human Services really helped us out by opening up their doors each day we had to drop dead date.
Do we have any other comments or questions? Any public comment? Okay, thank you very much. And we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item nine or 30 Echo, informational update and discussion on the mobile makerspace at the Carson City Library. For discussion only, Diane Baker.
Thank you. I have a PowerPoint, Sina's getting ready for us. And I want to thank you so much for having us here from the Carson City Library. And it is actually, it's my pleasure and it's actually fun to be able to bring you an update on this project. The mobile makerspace is a project for the The Mobile Makerspace is a project for the Carson City Library, and we were able to secure funds from, through the Library Services and Construction Act program through the Nevada State Library and Archives. And it's funding that we received in order to design and roll out a flexible learning space and take it outside our walls and expand the services to individuals, especially in after-school programs who are not able to come to a lot of the programs that we already have at the library and available to other students. So I'm looking... Oh, okay. The coolest thing that we have as far as visual would be the Makerspace van, and let's see, there we go. So if you go to the next one, I don't know what that is. There we go. The Makerspace van, we were able to get a great rap on the van to evoke the interest of individuals and actually to be eye-catching around the community as well. And in the next slide, you see we have our Makerspace tech. We were able to get a great student from WNC, Travis McDonald, and he is our tech assistant to take us out to different locations within the community. We have connections with Kids Club through Parks and Rec, the Boys and Girls Club, and the other that we're adding in as well would be with Juvenile Services and to be able to get some programs to individuals that are in those programs as well. And just to give you a quick highlight, just gives you a couple of the ideas, we're able to roll out information to students and to get the interest from K to 8th grade. So we're looking elementary, middle-school age, and you get an idea here where you can introduce great concepts, interest, and fun with projects that you see here, GeoSticks, Strabies, Makey-Makeys, get the basics of computer coding-type information. And in the next slide, we go one step up when we get to some of the older ages with Raspberry Pis and great, cool things that you can learn with coding and other computer projects. And in the next, just another fun one, where to get students started with stop-gap animation, we have things like StickBots to get them into the basics of the animation, and then to be able to carry on to get, once they get the basics, they can go on and create some of their own animation and background. And just again, I mentioned our connections are with Kids Club and Carson City Parks and Rec, the Boys and Girls Club, and Carson City Juvenile Services. And you can see our funders there from the State Library, the Institute of Museums and Library Services, and our friends at the Carson City Library that help things keep going on. Now, one of the things I would like to put out as an invitation to any of the board members, especially as we keep going through this year, that if you would like to come on a ride-along or come out to one of our events, we'll get that schedule out, and we would love to have you join us at one of the events out with the students. So that was our quick version. Did you have any questions?
I just want to say thank you for that service in the community. I think that, you know, I mean, just to be able to extend learning beyond just the school day, there's a lot of kids that go home and watch TV, and I know, I mean, and you have people like Ananda and Natalie working with you, which I know have a lot of kids around, so they understand that also, but I think that that's great that that's in the community, so thanks.
Thank you. It is a fun program.
There's no other comments or public comment? We'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 10 or 30 Fox Trot, discussion and possible action to approve and authorize the mayor and the Carson City School District Superintendent to sign the Leaders Library Card Challenge Commitment Letter in support of the Connect Ed Library Card Challenge to ensure that every K through 12 student in Carson City has a library card and knows how to use it. And this item is for discussion only. And Sina Lloyd.
Hi, this is Sina Lloyd, library director for the record. And this program, it's actually something that I'm going to have Natalie Wood, our Creative Learning Manager, discuss, so we'll just go ahead and get to it. I know it's getting late.
Thank you for the introduction. Once again, Natalie Wood, Creative Learning Manager. We have already met with Mr. Stokes and the team over at Carson City School District about this project. It's a great community program where students get library cards through enrollment in the school district, and we just want to move forward with that. And there's great, nationwide, there's a lot of communities that are already doing this, and we've already worked in the past doing something similar. So it's just to continue that partnership, make it easier, and make it grow so that all our students have library cards and have access to resources, services, and whatnot in our community. Any questions on that?
I just think it's a great service. I know you have done it in the past because my students have had it, and I know it not only provides them the opportunity for a safe place to go after school to the library, but it also provides them with access to, my son has been reading Kindle books and accessing that and a lot of where he doesn't even, I don't even have to drive him to the library. So that's very helpful. Are there any other questions or?
I just want to say that I can agendize this, bring it to the board meeting, and that way the mayor can take the required action.
I'd just like to say that in my former profession, people told me brevity is the soul of clarity. Good job.
And I'm glad to see this is coming back. I didn't realize that we didn't have it, and Natalie, we miss you.
I miss you guys.
Adriana, since we have a quorum here, can the board take action on this?
You can. Yeah, just the school.
So we don't have to wait for the next meeting. It's on the agenda.
They can't take action as the school board, but we could get it done.
But they make it, take it.
Right. I'd like to do that. Right.
Yeah. On the board supervisors, we'll take a motion.
Okay.
I move to support the commitment to work together as part of the Connect Ed Library Card Challenge to ensure that every K-12 student in Carson City has a library card and knows how to use it to access the learning resources available at their public libraries and authorize the mayor to sign the Leaders Library Card Challenge Commitment Letter. Yeah, this is, I can only make a motion for us.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay, carried. Thanks to the...
We're done.
That was in the spirit of brevity for us, too.
Brad, you took a good move, man. All right.
Since we can't take any action on this because we do not have a quorum, we will go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 11, which is 30G, because I don't know that one. I was thinking Georgia, but I wasn't sure. Informational update on the partnership between the Carson City School District and the Carson City Library for discussion only. Sina Lloyd.
Sina Lloyd, library director for the record. So the Carson City Library in our partnership with the school district has been recognized nationally. We submitted and were accepted for the American Library Association, a presentation entitled, "Not Just Watching, Doing: Libraries Helping Youth Create Video Productions." And so that will take place at the end of June of this year. So we will be presenting on a national stage for libraries. And with that, I'll go ahead and let Ananda talk about the PSAs, which is what we will be presenting at that conference.
Ananda Campbell Richards, Carson City School District Library Coordinator and Carson High School Library Media Specialist. And we have been partnering with the Carson City Library on the PSA project with our freshmen for a couple of years now, and I have to say this is the most successful year we've had yet. We have a collaboration of resources and personnel, so we have a great team that's working together. The freshman transitions, classroom teachers instruct on the content of the PSAs. Each student creates a PSA about a topic that will help them be successful at Carson High, whether it's healthy living, or joining a team, or an activity, or staying away from unhealthy choices. So they get to choose what their topic is. I, as the Library Media Specialist, instructs both in the classroom and whole group. I have all the freshmen at one time, and we talk about information literacy and our resources at Carson High and how to use those resources. And Kim Babcock from the Carson City Library instructs at the Digitarium. All of the students take a field trip to the Digitarium for media literacy skills. They receive their library cards, and they receive instruction on how to use the professional equipment at the Digitarium. So that's our PSA project. Thank you.
I have one thing to add on that. We issued 497 premier library cards to freshmen. Those are students that needed our resources to complete these projects.
And then it is a large amount of them, and it is, it's a great resource for them moving on into their later years of high school, and then if they move on to WNC, we still offer resources that they can use and utilize into their adulthood, our lifelong learning center. So with that, I'm going to then have Natalie talk a little bit about our Digitarium interns, which are provided by the school district.
So we have two interns this year that the school district actually, they pay for their internship. They work Sunday through Thursday. It's a rotating schedule there every other day, one-on-one the next day. They've been wonderful. They've been learning. They were such a help when we had over 50, 60 students in the Digitarium during PSA, November, December, heavy times. They did write statements, you know, part of their internship, working with us. Noelle, one of the internships, she noted, "This was a big accomplishment I achieved in my family, and everyone is really proud of me." Boyd, the other intern, noted that he wanted these jobs because of the people skills and computer skills he would learn. He thought working at the library would give him those skills, and he said he was right. So they're learning, they're happy to be there, and we're happy to have them. Any questions?
How much are they paid?
I believe that they're at a minimum wage for students that are not yet 18, and I want to just add a little bit here because when we first talked about putting these students in the library, it was based on cooperation from city manager Moreno to help us staff the library in a way that would help us with our PSA efforts. And so again, another really nice collaborative effort by the two institutions.
Sina, is there an outreach to the business community to try to place some of the students that could maybe use or would be interested in mentoring or internships? For instance, at my brokerage, we're interning a Carson High junior, and just teaching them basic business skills, admin skills, business planning, goal-setting, things of that nature. And I think that there's actually an appetite for that in the business community. So have you thought about that, or is that an existing outreach program?
We have not gone that deep into the, into what we've been able to offer, but we have offered resume-building workshops and classes with the teens that use our space. But we are exploring additional opportunities with the Boys and Girls Club, especially with their teen center and the amount of teens that they're getting to use that space, and I think that that would be a great opportunity. And thank you for that idea. I think that we can implement something like that.
Right, and there might be some opportunities with the Entrepreneurs Club at the Boys and Girls Club, as well as maybe the Adams Foundation. It just seems like, you know, we're always looking at how to break down silos and try to get everybody that's working on things to talk to each other and collaborate, so this might be a good opportunity to do that.
And I think we have a lot of that going on with our CT program with Mrs. Lewis and the stuff that we have reached at the top where the skills that they're using there, that we're using them to let them know that they can get internships, and they have the coordination there, too. So we have started that.
You know, from a business owner's perspective, we're always looking for young people who are actually interested in learning business skills, and they seem to be very difficult to find. So if you can open a pipeline to the business community and supply those students that are interested, again, I think that there is quite an appetite for that out in the community.
A spin-off benefit of this might be something we, I think we're all concerned about, which is keeping our young people interested in Carson City so they'll think about staying here. So many of them go off to UNR or someplace else and don't come back. And if they have roots not only in their social situations, but roots in, you know, moving up through and work when they get out of school, that's a great idea. Thank you, Brad.
And just on our end, we have, in the past, we've interviewed and we've hired, and we actually still employ an individual who graduated from the New E program through the high school and the hub, and he's been a great asset to the library, and we will definitely explore. And I'd love to meet with you and maybe talk about some of your specific ideas on that.
And Mr. Stokes, don't we have our community partnerships through our strategic plan where we do have a list of businesses who have been interested in having interns? And I believe you can contact the district office if you are a business that would look to partner with the school district for that.
Yes, we certainly would be happy to connect parties to make that work.
Just to piggyback, not on that, but one of the reasons I wanted this on the agenda is because you guys offer so many other services for our parents. A lot of like with us changing over to Infamite Campus, you guys had classes on that at the Digitarium, and that's very beneficial for our parents because it's after-hours. And then we've actually used the site to have parent-teacher conferences, and we've had, we had almost 80% more parents turn up to their library conferences than we had at ours. So I think these are important services, and I want to make sure that financially, that, you know, if it comes down to the burden, that we kind of need to share that because I think that's a very intricate part of our programs and of your programs. So that's why I wanted this one thing on the agenda, was just to allow you, because you guys do an awful lot of our stuff outside of the classroom, and it's deeply appreciated and it's well-used by the community. And I wanted just to publicly let you guys know that if it comes down, because we all have our own budget concerns, but I think this is one of the ones where the school district would like to be consulted at times if it looks like something's going to be cut, or if there's something that's going to be added, and just want to keep that lines of communication open and let you know that's what we're thinking, too.
If there's no other comments, no public comment, we'll go ahead and move on to item, Agenda Item 12, which is, or 30H, public comment. Is there any public comment at this time? Okay, Sina, and we can move on to Agenda Item 13, 38, or 30I, adjournments.
Before we adjourn, under public comment, maybe, I'd just like to give some thought to, when we have another one of these meetings, that maybe we have somebody from the governor's office here talk about the governor's strategic plan for development and education in the state, and also maybe bring the state superintendent of schools in to give us an update on where the state is going from that perspective, and just get it, move us out of our area here and see what's going on at the next level up.
And they'll have a lot more of those answers in the June because the session would hopefully be over by then.
That's right. Another item that I should have brought up in public comment is that our school board does have a vacancy. That's, we are down, and so we have a vacancy in District 6, and if you are interested in joining us on the school board, you can contact the district office and apply there. Okay, and we'll go ahead, oh, Sina's going to say something. Go ahead.
The library board also has a vacancy, so if there's anybody interested, we would be interested in applications. And then Natalie did bring up to me, and I did forget about the certain program that we did run, but we ran business classes with New E at the library over winter break.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay.
Move to adjourn.
We moved to adjourn? Wait, we can't move, so I guess you'll have to adjourn. Wait, we can't move, so I guess you'll have to adjourn.